Baltimore, Charm City. Neighborhoods full of history, great people, and lots of potential. A city trying to clean up its act after years of decay. A place where children should be safe to play on clean streets. But the pockets of problems are growing. Grime and crime make for bad neighbors. And now, even the once pristine parts of our wonderful city are in the fight of their lives to stop a city plagued by crime, grime, corruption, and failing schools. From Fox 45 News, this is Your Voice, Your Future Town Hall, the Save Our City Tour. Neighbors Helping Neighbors, Council District by Council District.
Good evening and thanks for joining us for our 11th Save Our City Fox 45 News Town Hall. We're continuing to hold these conversations and each and every Baltimore City Council District all across the city, listening to community members as they talk about what is on their minds and impacting their communities the most. Tonight, we are in District 9, and we are at the Lithuanian Hall. And tonight, we, just like every Town Hall, we have invited Mayor Brandon Scott to participate in the conversation, but he is refusing to participate and come and listen. But that is not stopping us from having assembled a panel. Let me introduce to you those members who are here to participate in this conversation. First, we have Councilman John Bullock, who represents this district, District 9. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having me.
We also have Thruh Vignaraja. He's a former federal prosecutor and Baltimore City mayoral candidate. Then we also have Sonya Edie, who is a resident of this district and a member of the Poppleton Community. And then we have Angel Lewis, a former principal at Claremont Middle School. Now, again, District 9 is one of the most violent areas in the city, but it's also home to Augusta Fells. And Augusta Fells at the center of several investigations from Project Baltimore. Let's take a look at some of the reporting and how we got to right here tonight.
Serious allegations at a West Baltimore High School.
What about the kids? What about the failure factory that Augusta Fells Savage became?
A scheme to change grades and inflate enrollment numbers, first exposed by Project Baltimore, and six months later confirmed by city schools' own investigator.
He didn't fail. The school failed him.
Project Baltimore first discovered grading irregularities at Augusta Fells in March 2021, when we spoke with Tiffany France. Her son passed just three classes in four years, but was still being promoted through the course levels with a 0.13 grade point average. He ranked 62 out of 120 in his class.
Where do I turn? Where do I go? Who helps my son? What happens for me?
The internal investigation would show the problem was even worse than we first reported. Administrators at Augusta Fells had improperly changed grades and put students in classes that weren't even offered.
The ghost students were attending ghost classes. The classes didn't exist.
Ghost students, as they're known by educators, can be used to inflate enrollment numbers and increase the tax dollars a school receives. Project Baltimore in April spoke with a former student who told us he wasn't in the school because he was in jail.
From August up until December.
So from August to December of 2019, you were incarcerated?
Yes. As I can see in the transcripts, yeah, I'm basically a ghost student, but I didn't attend, didn't enroll in the class or anything. I've been gone since 2017, buddy.
City schools identified 100 students with questionable enrollment status. When all ghost students are accounted for, it could be millions of dollars owed back to taxpayers.
It certainly sounds like fraud. If somebody is keeping them on the rolls, that's fraudulent. That's theft of taxpayers' money. That's a crime.
The district has assured parents Augusta Fells is now under the guidance of an experienced and transformational principal, Kamala Carnes. But we found Carnes also has a questionable past.
You don't even know what my questions are. How can you say no comment?
Carnes has been the focus of two internal investigations by city schools. One in 2017 as principal of Claremont Middle High, where she was found to have mismanaged a student's activity fund. The other in 2019, when Project Baltimore reported on allegations of grade changing at Joseph C. Briscoe Academy. An internal investigation ultimately cleared Principal Carnes in the Briscoe case. But the report was inconclusive as to whether improper grade changing was happening at the school. And when the report came out, Carnes was already at Augusta Fells.
Tonight, Chris, from Project Baltimore, thank you.
For having me here. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for having us, for being part of this conversation tonight, talking about Augusta Fells. Now, Chris, looking at where we are with this investigation, this obviously has been going on for quite some time now, especially when it comes to Project Baltimore reporting. Can you tell us anything new or a recent development that is being discussed, especially when it comes to lawmakers, about what you have found was happening?
Sure. So the first story that we broke on this was in March of 2021. This was over a year ago now, and this continues to unfold, and this story is not going away anytime soon. So just this week, just in the past couple of days, a bill was introduced into the legislature to change how schools are funded throughout the entire state of Maryland. So through our investigation, we had found that there were students who were enrolled in the school that were not actually attending the school, but taxpayers had paid to educate that child. So a bill's been introduced into the legislature that went before the Appropriations Committee, has yet to be voted on, but it has been argued where instead of counting enrollment one day a year, which is what schools do in the state of Maryland, on September 30th, they do one enrollment count, and that provides the funding for the entire year, this bill would make it four times a year. So we're going to see if that gets through the legislature. But there's a lot of other things that are falling out from this investigation. We have possible criminal charges that might be coming down. We know external bodies are looking into this. And we also have Tiffany France, who was the woman who was in that story. I called her just a couple of days ago. Her son is set to graduate in June. So one year ago, he had three classes that he passed. He got into an accelerated class. So a year and a half later, he's set to graduate in June. He's got a full-time job. So a year ago, this was a woman who was crying. She had nowhere to go. I felt terrible for her. And now, her son seems to be on a good path, and it looks like he can be someone who could be a productive member of society, where a year ago, it looked like he wasn't going to graduate and things were going downhill.
And we also know, too, that this conversation and this investigation impacted so many people. We heard from other people coming forward say that they felt similar situations as well.
There's a number of people who have come forward with this same type of story. And what it took for Tiffany France was to blow it up, come out, cry on TV, and say, what is going on with the education that my child is receiving? And we can see now that it wasn't the child, because he's now going to graduate in June. He's doing really well. It was the school. But that's what it took. And it might take many more people like Tiffany France to come out and blow the whistle on this before something substantive starts to change.
All right, Chris, thank you so much. Councilman Bullock, I want to get right to some of the questions that we have. And you are obviously an elected leader, a member of the Baltimore City Council. This was happening in your district while this was going on. Do you think at this point in time that there should be a review of the CEO of the city schools, Dr. Sonya Santelis, given this information under her watch?
Well, again, I think it's always important to look at folks who are being responsible, right? Whether they be educators, parents, elected officials, administrators. And so, you know, one of the things that we can do as a council is continue to have those investigative and legislative oversight hearings where we can hear directly from the city schools administrator. I know that it's obviously a challenging role, not only in terms of the administration functions, but also recognizing that young people are products of the neighborhoods that they come from and the homes that they come from. So again, I think it's always important to stay engaged with the school system and the CEO.
But is that a yes or a no? Do you think there should be a review of her? I mean, she's been in this position for six years now.
Well, I think that is a review. I mean, again, if we're talking about having consistent conversations, looking at performance of schools, and looking at the overall system, yes.
Do you think her contract should be extended?
Again, that's not my call. What I will say is that, you know, she does serve because of the mayor's appointment. But what I will say is I do respect the work that she's done thus far for the city, and so look forward to improved performance from our students and from our schools.
Given the information that we have, we just heard some of the findings from just the one investigation into Augusta Fells. Are you concerned about the education that the Baltimore City Public School students are getting?
Well, again, you know, I say this as a father of two young boys who were in Baltimore City Schools, to say this as an educator. I look at the education that my young people receive as being top-notch. At the same time, I know that they have family support at home, which makes a big difference. And I think, you know, having that undergirding is very important for them. But I think all of our students, wanting them to have an adequate education allows them to function within our society.
Angel Lewis, I want to come to you because you obviously worked in the public school system. Do you think the findings that we're learning about Augusta Fells are happening district-wide?
I can't speak to whether it's happening district-wide, but it is happening in a large number of schools.
How can you be confident with that?
Having been in the school as a principal, you have colleagues that you speak with. You share stories of what's going on in your neighborhoods, what's going on within your schools. A lot of the stories mirror the same.
When it comes to ghost students, ghost classes, enrollment change, is that what you're talking about?
As it relates to community challenges, such as the councilman mentioned, as well as enrollment for students, identifying students who aren't attending, which you would refer to as ghost students, yes.
So you think it's happening, you know, from your perspective, that it's perhaps happening at a number of schools?
Yes. I don't think it's unique to one particular school. If it were unique in just a one outlier situation, you wouldn't see the vast number of other issues that are unintended consequences of such said.
Councilman Bullock, with that information, what do you think needs to happen from the city?
Well, I'd like to see what the data looks like. Again, you know, it's one thing to posit that as a theory, it's another thing to see it borne out with data. So I think those kinds of investigations are important to make sure that the narrative actually matches up with what we can actually find.
Is that something that you can do as a member of the city council? Call for that investigation and demand those answers from the district?
So actually, I think this is a very important question. I'm glad you ask it, because one of the misnomers is that the city council has direct control over the schools, which they don't. And so if you look at the Baltimore City School Commissioners, again, that's the body that has the oversight over the schools. Now, what we can do as a council, and I will say as a member of the Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee, is to continue to have those meetings. And we've had a number of hearings where we've had the CEO, we've had administrators come and talk about what's going on and give us updates. That's something that I'm still committed to doing going forward.
I know, hold on one second, Thruh, because I know that you said you don't have direct control over the school system, the school district as a whole, but you do approve the budget.
Yes. And at this point, one of the things that's very interesting about the budget, and I think it's really worth people understanding, is that in terms of our former government, we have the mayor that has set the budget, and that the council has not had the ability to actually adjust or move money around within a budget. Now, due to a recent charter amendment, that will change in subsequent years. But at this point, we don't have the ability to cut or move. All we can do now is cut. We can't reappropriate money within the school's budget, the city's budget, including schools.
Given the information and the problems within the district and the system that we're seeing, do you think that it would be appropriate to use that power and leverage that to cut money from the budget until you see or get answers and see changes from those who can make them?
Absolutely not. One of the things that's important to recognize about our school system, it's historically been underfunded. And so to then cut even further to the bone would be an injury to our students in our cities. No, I wouldn't cut funds from the city schools at this point.
Thruh, I know you wanted to bring up something, and I want to talk about funding. You mentioned funding. We know that Kerwin is coming. The school district is one of the top five of the most-funded school districts in the 100 school districts across the country. Thruh, do you think more funding is the answer?
Look, more funding is helpful if it is directed to specific purposes. If somebody came forward and said, look, we need $50 million because we're going to put heat and air conditioning in every school, because there are 60 schools that currently don't have heat and air conditioning, I'm all for it. If somebody came and said, we need a dedicated transportation system, because right now our kids are taking the MTA and an hour and a half ride from one side of the city to another to get their schools, I'd be all for it. But to suggest that the third, or fourth, or fifth highest per pupil expenditure in the country is not enough, because we have been historically underfunded, I think is an abdication of responsibility. And I'm so grateful that the councilman is here. Candidly, we've got to respect him, because a lot of them don't show up. But I've said it before, and I'm not going to not say it just because he's here, to suggest that it isn't our city leader's responsibility begs the question, whose responsibility is it? If you can't blame the CEO, and you can't blame the mayor, and you can't blame the city council, who are these people to go to to say, my children are not getting educated? A generation of children have been failed from one school to another, all across the city. My mom and dad are city school teachers. I'm so proud of them for the work that they did. But let's not pretend that three generations of children in Baltimore have not been failed by us. And if it's not the city council, and it's not the mayor, and it's not the CEO of schools, we can't just keep saying the Republican governor is to blame. I'm a Democrat. I'd love to blame Governor Hogan, but it's not Governor Hogan's fault that the city schools in Baltimore have been broken for 50 years.
Councilman Bullock, he said that this is an abdication of responsibility from you and other elected leaders to say that this is a funding problem. How do you respond?
Well, my comments were not that it was a funding problem. Again, the problems run much deeper than funding. Funding is one of the elements. But as I mentioned before, young people, they're products of their neighborhoods and products of their home. And I say this as a father, like I said, with two young boys in school, I know what they're dealing with, right? And so I look at the progress reports. I look at the report cards. I help them with their homework. I know when they're falling down. And so sometimes, we have to also recognize that a lot of the problems we deal with, whether it be education, whether it be criminal justice, start within the home. And so that's where the first responsibility is. Now, again, as elected officials, there are things we can do from the legislative branch, which we're a part of, from the executive branch, whether we're talking about the mayor or talking about the governor, or things from the judicial branch. But again, there is plenty of responsibility and blame to lay around.
When it comes to the family responsibility, I totally understand what you're saying. And I hear where you're saying the family dynamic is very important in this conversation. But can you govern your way out of that? And what can you do in order to handle or to get a grip on this problem that we're seeing within the school system? If it is, one arm is the family problem, you can't make laws about that, but you can address legislation or plans to implement and change the way the school system is operating. That is your responsibility.
Yeah, thank you for asking that. One of the things that I know myself and other members have been champions for is the community school model, right? Where schools are not just places where young people get educated from eight to three, but they're also extensions of the community. So opportunities to deal with adult literacy, if we're dealing with food insecurity and have food pantries, having some great community partners. There are some schools that have really strong community partners, do everything from mental health and also other supportive services. So those are some of the things we have to do as well.
Is there a bill that you can introduce about that? Or I guess my question is, what can you do? If you're saying this isn't something that the city council can do, what can you do?
Right. And I think the answer's sort of embedded in your question, right? So you mentioned that some things you can't legislate. So there are some things that the council can't actually put a bill in to make happen. But at the same time, we can also then use our voices to also push the administration to do certain things, and also encourage the school system to do those things as well.
What would you like, what would you encourage them to do?
Well, again, I think, you know, extending some of those opportunities for families to be engaged. There's a parent at a community advisory council, right? And making sure that those parents' voices are being heard. But then also utilizing those resources from Kerwin, from the state, and also, you know, locally, to make sure that we're actually filling those gaps.
Ms. Lewis, I want to ask you a question, because you obviously worked in the school district. You saw some of this. Did you see the family dynamic at play within the classroom as well?
Yes, I can say that. At my school in particular, we had the school family council that you just spoke of. We had parent involvement. The community had a great deal of support. We had the food pantry you mentioned for scarce necessities for families. That is a component that is outside of every single community's control, right? Family dynamics. You don't go into the home every single day. You don't tell parents what to do, essentially, with their children. So that's not something that you can control in order to get this really under control. So you've got to control what you can. The education piece is solely on the responsibility of the educators. Nowhere in the law does it say you educate the child, but if they come from this neighborhood, you have a reason or an alternative to that education. You're still responsible. You're still accountable. I can say, as a former principal in city schools, that was one thing that we took very seriously. If we had kids that didn't come to school, we knew that by 10 o'clock, we were calling, we were going to homes picking them up if we needed to. So you've got to think outside of the box of a reason or an excuse as to why not, and get to the why, and make it happen.
And I think the reason why that's such an important point, Ms. Lewis, is because there are scarce kids in this city that are as lucky as the councilman's kids. There are, of course, kids that have stable parents. They have food for everyone. They have a comfortable, secure, trauma-free environment, and then school can augment that. But what do you do for the hundreds, the thousands, the tens of thousands of kids that don't come from that? Do you just say, well, we're out of luck because there's nothing we can do? We know that that is the plight, the situation that faces so many of these children. So if we know that the kids in Baltimore City don't have the same situations as the kids in Montgomery County, that the kids that get to go to Gilman or fancy private schools, you have to build a school environment that accounts for that. And community schools are terrific acknowledgement of that, right? We build the services that they need. But if the system is still failing, if generations of kids are coming out and are more likely to go to jail or to a gang than to college or to a trade school, then we have a problem. And somebody's got to stand up at some point and say, you know what? I don't know exactly whose job it is, so I'm going to make it mine. And so often, you look at the people that are standing up, the courage of Sonya Edie, the courage of Angel Lewis, the carnage of Tiffany Francis, they're the people that are driving change in this city. That's great. I applaud the courage of these women that are willing to stand up and take scrutiny. But they're not the ones whose bills, whose jobs it is to do this. They're not the ones whose salaries we're paying to step up and do this. There's 1,000 people in government that need to be stepping up and taking responsibility. I don't really care anymore, you know, about the finger pointing. Somebody's just got to step up and do it.
When it comes to the ghost students, the grade changing, the inflated enrollment numbers, those things that are confirmed by Project Baltimore's investigation, but also confirmed by the district themselves in this investigation into Augusta Fells, those things aren't happening in the home, Councilman Bullock. Those things are happening within the school district.
Correct.
So what can you, I mean, what can you do about that? Are you, does that bother you? Does that?
Absolutely. I mean, that's unacceptable.
So what are you doing about it?
Again, we talked about this before in terms of the question, in terms of what can the legislative branch do in terms of grade fixing and changing within schools, right? That's already against the law, right? So there's not a law that we can pass to actually address that. Now, again, that's something that is truly problematic. The other point that I think is worth mentioning, because we talked about the funding for schools. Part of the reason why Baltimore has the allotment for funding for schools is that people have to take into account the geographical cost of education index. Given that we have a majority poor student body, there are different costs as it relates to educating a persistently poor district. And that's why you see those numbers being so high in a place like Baltimore. So again, to your point around the young people who come to school who may be hungry or who may have issues in terms of trauma, a lot of that is reflected in this geographical cost of education index.
I understand that this is your position as the city council member, but you also are an elected leader. You have the bully pulpit. You have this platform to raise up your voice in question and call on the city school CEO and demand answers. And we haven't heard very much from you when this was happening in your district.
So what we did know is that there was actually an investigation, to your point, that was being conducted by city schools, and they found the same information.
Can I say something?
Yes.
To our councilman's point, geographically in Baltimore City, there has been a lot of displacement without, within the black communities. And so what I've recognized, that they were closing down a lot of our schools and then transferring these kids from different neighborhoods into other neighborhoods, you know, and overcrowding other schools. And so when you talk about the budget, the budget follows the children. And so if the enrollment is not there, then the monies doesn't follow, you know? And I've witnessed a lot of trauma in Poppleton's community with a lot of the kids who live in the poor homes and going down to their school and seeing how the kids were being affected, not understanding that they were traumatized at the time, just wondering, why is the school like this? You know, it's like off the change. And to see some of the kids getting passed by that was in fourth grade and couldn't read, when that was brought to my attention, it's like, what do we do here? Because these kids are not being educated, but they were being pushed through the system. And one thing that they did at James McKinney was they brought in a community school. But they displaced all of the teachers there and administration, and now you have this whole new dynamic for the kids, who these teachers were nurturers. Some of these teachers were the only, like, parents that these kids had, you know? So coming to school when you have people now that you don't recognize, and they come in because they're hungry, you know? Nobody's there to get them their medications, you know? They're coming home and no one's there. You know, their parents are incarcerated. You have the grandparents that's trying to raise these kids, you know? And so they are the victims now. And so the school system, I had an issue with my grandson. I had to go to the school counselor, I mean, the principal, to find out what type of counseling, what kind of clinicians do you have here? Because these kids need some support, you know? And so that piece needs to be a part of that funding, needs to be put into these schools so these kids can get the type of education that they really need.
That's a good point. We do, I want to go to my colleague, Riel Creighton. And Ms. Sonya, I want to come back to you and talk more about the Poppleton community. But first, let's hear from Riel, because she is listening to some of the community members who are here participating in the Town Hall. Riel, tell us who you have and what their question is for our panel.
Well, Mackenzie, I'm here with Kenny Ebron, and he sees this, on this discussion, as a very longstanding problem. And the reason that he believes this is because he himself, at 60 years old, a product of Baltimore City Schools, who graduated and could not read at the time. So Kenny, I'll let you ask your question.
Okay. My question is that, okay, I, again, came from, out of high school, graduated, pushed through the school system, came out of school, reading on the fourth grade and reading level. And how is it so, if it's this, this, I'm 60, and this has been happening for a long time. So how is it that I can teach my grandkids who come home with homework that's in the fifth grade, sixth grade, 12th grade? How can I help them with their homework if I've been pushed through? So that's my question for the panel.
Councilman Bullock, why don't you take that question?
Well, one, just, Mr. Ebron, Kenny, I appreciate you. I mean, I know the work you do in the community, but also, you know, it's coming forward and sharing that. I think it makes a, it makes a big difference. One of the things I think is very useful is that we have some partners, not just in terms of Baltimore City Schools, but also other organizations. So for instance, one of the organizations that I'm very proud of, we've done some work with, is Project Numa. And so what it does is it deals with young people, not only from the issue of trauma, but also enrichment and dealing with educational support. And so I think it's important for us to partner with groups who are doing this kind of work, right? Because everything isn't going to happen in the classroom, right? We have some great teachers, and teachers do a lot of work, and I have great respect for teachers. But also, you know, we need family support as well. And so whether it is, you know, organized tutoring programs, which could also be useful. I know there are some teachers who also tutor, some who do it for additional resources, some who do it to actually do family support. I know, for instance, even when I know young people who are challenged in school, there are also coach classes that are also available that a lot of teachers provide. So again, you know, understand you're not alone in this, because I think about even my own experience in education, right? And needing that kind of support from the family. So I appreciate you lifting that up and asking that question.
So with this question, given that it's been a longstanding problem, what can the city do about it now? It's been brought to the attention. We're hearing from community member after We're hearing from community member after community member that this is not a new problem. What can you, as their elected leader and other members of the city council, do about it?
Again, it's a tough one. Obviously, as you mentioned, it predates a lot of us we're talking about.
But you're elected now.
Oh, I was trying to answer your question. But again, we've been, this is an issue that's predated us, right? And so one of the things that we can see is maybe been lost along the way, right? Not only testing, not just testing in terms of standardized tests, right? But also what does it mean in terms of achievement and performance? And so to your point before about, you know, even passing students along, right? Making sure that young people are proficient before they go to the next grade. Those are some of the things that are really important.
Chris, did you want to join in?
One of the things that we do hear a lot is there's no sense of urgency. And when you have a situation like you have now, what you saw out of Augusta Fells, we recently did a story about Patterson High School, where 77% of the kids were reading at an elementary school level. It's a high school, 77% of the kids are reading at an elementary school level. The mayor didn't comment on it. The president of the city council didn't comment on it. The CEO of city schools didn't comment on it. When we had this story about Augusta Fells, we had a kid with a .13 GPA who was ranked 62nd out of 120 in his class, roughly half, meaning 58 other kids were doing worse than a .13 GPA. Mayor didn't comment on it. President of the city council didn't comment on it. City school CEO didn't comment on it. You do keep saying that the situation can get better, but how is it going to get better when there is no sense of urgency from any city leaders to improve the situation?
Yeah, I'm really glad that you mentioned that, because I think one of, one of the realities with that particular case is that that student had been in the school for four years, but it had not been accumulating credits. And so because he was essentially a freshman, he was in the middle of that class of young people who had not had any grades for which to actually be scored. And so it's a misnomer to say that he was in the middle of the pack for his grade because he wasn't graded, he wasn't in the proper grade, even though he was there for four years, he had not passed. Now, in terms of a sense of urgency, I'm so glad that you mentioned attendance. As a principal, as a teacher, we think about attendance. And so part of it is, and I know schools who do this, right? Who then will, you know, reach out to the parent and say, you know, "Where's the child", making sure the child is enrolled. That's a sense of urgency. Because the other part that troubled me about that case was that the amount of school days that that young man had missed, right? And some of that should have been called along the way. It doesn't become urgent when we're talking about four years down the road, when a young person's looking to graduate. It needs to be urgent when they've missed a vast number of days in year one, two, three, and four. That's a sense of urgency that's really important, too. And again, as a city, again, we have to make sure that we're trying to get young people on the roadmap, on the ramp to be able to be successful, too. So again, if they are behind, we have a lot of kids who are overage and under credit and making sure that they actually are able to, to be able to read and be able to function, be able to do math, and be able to be in part of our society.
And I just have one more question for you.
Sure.
And I know that we're asking you a lot of questions, but because most of the elected leaders don't talk to us. And I hope you feel that these are fair questions, and I think that they are fair questions. And if you don't, please, please let me know. But when we do these stories, I do feel like the outrage is from people who live outside Baltimore City. And when we did the story about Patterson, when we did the story about Augusta Fells, the people who were outraged were Governor Hogan, the Lieutenant Governor, Rod Rutherford, people on the radio that are talking about it, Forbes, The Washington Post, like, there's media outlets all around the country, Yahoo News and Reddit that are doing these stories with the headlines that we're putting out there, because they are, they are eye-opening stories. But there doesn't appear to be any people in the city that are having the same reaction. And when you hear a lot of people talking about the stories that we're doing, there is a level that, there's a word that people use over and over again, and it's acceptance. And it does appear, from listening to people outside the city, like the governor, for example, that it's just accepted that 77% of kids at a high school are going to read at an elementary school level. And if you look at the comments on Facebook from that story or other social media, that's what people are actually saying. It's been like this for decades. Do you feel that there is a level of acceptance? This is the status quo, and that's why there's not the urgency or the outrage over it?
Well, there can't be, there can't be acceptance of it. And I think even to Thoreau's point, he talks about having parents who taught in Baltimore City Public Schools, right? And so we know that education is real and education is possible, right? And that we have those opportunities. And so even if we go back, you know, a while, we know that that's possible. So I don't think it's really an issue in terms of acceptance, but there are a whole host of factors that lead to it, right? So as folks, you know, come to school, not being school, not being ready for school, but then also the pipeline of not, you know, being successful while they are in school. I don't think it's a level of acceptance. I know I can't accept it personally, and I don't think anyone should accept it in their household, and I don't think we should accept it in our schools either. But again, us yelling about it, or people, you know, making, you know, comments about it, is not necessarily going to be the solution to the issue. Again, the school system, the CEO, our teachers, our administrators, they have a hard job to do, and I recognize that as well. And also, the young people they deal with are products of environments that they have to then fight through and deal with this. But we know there are opportunities for success, but we have to have that support from the community school model, from neighborhoods, from not only, not only elected officials, but also even from our religious institutions. There have been so many cases where in the past, we've had religious institutions that have opened their doors for neighborhood meetings, for support services. None of us can do it by ourselves.
Thoreau.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. You know, you brought up a great point that this is, this is tough. This is a hard job. But this is what we signed up for. So when I had parents that told me, "Principal Lewis, I can't help my child because I can't read," I went to Baltimore City Community College and said, "I have parents, they can't read, I don't have all the teachers that can help me teach it. I'll teach the classes myself if y'all help me, but I can open the building up. You can come in, you can teach GED classes. That's going to help them. They're sitting with their child learning to read. You have to go beyond the box. So yes, it's hard, but this is what you, this is what you asked for, and you don't get to cherry pick it. You don't.
I think that's great. That's the kind of stuff we need to be doing.
That's the reality. And I'm not going to blame a parent. I'm not going to blame a neighborhood. I'm not going to blame a parent. You tell me what the problem is, and I'm going to help you. I'm going to sit there and work through it, because that's what I'm supposed to do.
And you know who does that? Leaders do that. I mean, that is what leadership sounds like. You know, there was, there was a mayor in New York who said, "If a pigeon dies in the park, it's my responsibility." In Baltimore City, we hear from every elected official that it's somebody else's job.
Yes.
And somebody has got to step up, whether it's a principal, whether it's a teacher, whether it's a journalist, and say, "You know what? My job is to help solve this problem. And councilman, I am so grateful that you are here. I really, really am." We should be shouting about it. We should be shouting about it every day. In 18, what, '65, Frederick Douglass said, "It is easier to raise strong children than to repair broken men."
Broken men, absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We knew this hundreds of years ago. We knew what would happen if we didn't raise our children. And what happened? In Baltimore, we see the vestiges of it every day on our streets, the people that are leaving, the people that are getting shot, the people that are joining gangs, the people that can't read, that turn to crime. That is the legacy we've inherited. And none of us, none of us took the job thinking that we were working in Montgomery County. None of us took this job thinking that we were going to a place where things were easy. We worked in a place where things were hard. And we knew that when we signed up, and we should be shouting about it every day. And we shouldn't stop shouting about it until we've done an audit of every school, top to bottom, to find out where on earth the money is going, which kids are actually there, which kids are getting educated, and which ones are not. We should be doing a top-to-bottom audit of the entire system. And if, by the way, there are people that are violating the laws that you guys have passed, they should be prosecuted. We didn't know about what was happening at Augusta Fells until Chris Papst decided to go and do an investigation, because somebody had the courage to stand up. A mother, a teacher, a principal had the courage to stand up and say, "What is happening in these schools? I cannot countenance any longer. I'm going to stand up and do something about it." They shouldn't be the only ones. We should all be doing that.
Two quick things, and I think you make some points. So one, you talked about that Douglass quote in terms of raising children, and that's essentially the role of the family. But again, to your point, as a, as a leader of a school, I think you did the appropriate thing. And I think we're looking for everyone to solve issues in different areas. But again, as a leader of a school, I think you did the right thing, and I think we need to be more examples of that. Again, that's not, that's not a council function, but that's an educational function, and we all have responsibility. But I think that's a great way to step up and do that.
Do you agree that there should be an audit of the school system?
I believe there has. There have been audits of the school system.
An external audit?
Actually, there was an external audit.
Bringing one in, top to bottom, look at the numbers and find out what's going on? Should there be another one, given this information that we've learned as well?
I think it's always about transparency. So again, yeah, that's something that can be welcomed.
The city school district is not, in fact, on the list to be audited biannually by the comptroller's office. Should that, should that change? And should you call for one?
I think it's worth investigating. I think it's worth looking at.
Angel, do you think, and I ask this question to the councilman, do you think that there is a level of acceptance when it is made public? And I keep going back to the Patterson example, because it's just the most recent one, of a, of a high school where 77% of the kids are reading at an elementary school level. And I can't get any interviews with anybody inside the city of, in an appointed nature, whether it be the school board, or the city CEO, or anybody who's elected. And you would think that that type of headline, people would want to come out and talk about it. Do you feel that there's a level of acceptance? You were in the school system. You saw it. You were there for a while. How do you feel about it?
I think it is an unspoken rule of acceptance. No one will, of course, admit it. But if you are, if you are aware of the problem and you consistently point the finger and are not working to really get to solution, then yes, that is a level of acceptance. Because as Thoreau mentioned, it's going to continue. It's going to continue to perpetuate. That's what happens. So you're a 12th grader, you're reading on a fourth grade level, you become 20, it doesn't get better. 30, it doesn't get better. 40, it doesn't get better. Somewhere in between there, you may become incarcerated, because now you've turned to crime. What else is there for you? And so now you've gone and you've had children who are now matriculating through the system. And then you say, "Well, it's, you're a product of your environment." Well, school system, you created that environment. So you're pointing the finger at that which you just created. And so you do have a certain level of acceptance. How that changes, it's exactly what you said. Everyone has to come together. Everyone has to stand up and demand more.
Ms. Lewis, thank you so much. I want to pivot, because we have a lot to talk about. Chris, thank you so much for coming and participating in your investigations. We'll continue to watch the Project Baltimore investigations and see what comes out next.
Thank you.
I want to pivot now and talk about crime, because when you talk about a product of the environment, obviously, we're hearing a lot about the community aspect of education and the crime and the public safety nature. We're in District Nine. It's one of the most violent districts in the entire city. I just looked up the numbers before this event started. 29 homicides and shootings just this year. It's March 15th, just 29 people were shot or killed in this district alone. Councilman Bullock, what is going on in this district?
Well, again, you know, a lot of this goes back not only in terms of five, 10, 20 years, in terms of what we're dealing with in the city. I know you've had conversations with the police commissioner and some of the command staff in terms of the culture in our city, unfortunately, where violence has been pervasive. But particularly, if you look at the Ninth District, you look at West Baltimore, you look at areas that have been disinvested for so long. I know Ms. Eadie, I mentioned comments before, right? We have about 15,000 vacant properties in the city, 5,000 alone in this district, right? We also look at the levels of addiction and unemployment, right? And all those things run together. And the unfortunate aspect of it, if you also layer on top of a pandemic and you layer on top of that all the trauma that folks have been dealing with, this is really a symptom of that. And crime is really a symptom of other things. It's a symptom of lack of investment in education and recreation, housing issues as well. And so this is something that we know in neighborhoods that have been struggling, have been struggling for quite some time, whether we look at the legacy of not having investment in housing and every other thing from this point on. Same thing in terms of healthy food options. So there's a lot that goes on, and this is really just the symptom of all the things that we've been dealing with.
When you talk about it as a symptom, people are dying because of that symptom, then. People don't have five years. People aren't living five years to see the fruition of the mayor's crime plan. They're not, they don't have that time. Sonia Eadie, I want to ask you a question. You are a resident of this district. What is it like for you to live in this area, and what are you seeing in your community?
Lack. We have a lack of everything, all types of resources. We have lost homes. We have lost people. And with that, the loss of people, I see is even less investment, you know? No one wants to come into a neighborhood where there's nothing. And what I've identified is the city's powers of, even with eminent domain, what uses this urban renewal plans. It's like they allow our neighborhoods to get to a place of blight, you know, and then able to come in with gentrification. So when I look at our neighborhoods, especially where the crime, the high crime areas are, you see high blight, you know? And so for me, it's just them waiting to come in and say, "Okay, it's enough light going on now. Now we can come in and bring the investment." You know, so it's like pushing people out. So, yeah, we're losing families. We're losing some families. People are looking to move to the counties just to be able to save their child, you know? And I have a daughter who moved not to the counties, but on the outskirts of the city, trying to save her child, her children. But when you look at, but this is the neighborhoods that they went to school in. This is where they were being raised up. This is where their friends are, you know? And so a lot of these kids become victims, because this is their environment. This is all they know. And so without any, the first jobs that they see is drug dealing. You know, there's no employment there. There's no, it's nothing really there for them to grab hold of hope, you know? And so these are things where I just see that the city really needs to invest, and the children, they're going to find something to get involved in. If it's nothing there, they're going to go to another neighborhood.
You brought up eminent domain, and I want to ask you about that, because obviously, the Poppleton community, you personally are dealing with that. Working with the city, if you could, if you could address, obviously, the mayor is not here, he was invited to participate, but I know you've reached out to the mayor's office about it. You do have a member of the city council here, sitting two seats away from you. What kind of information or what questions would you like to ask city leadership about what's going on in your neighborhood particularly?
Councilman Bullock, I know we, we have been asking for transparency. We have been asking for inclusion from the community, and so far, we haven't received that. We just had a meeting with the deputy mayor and city officials. We are still not getting the type of answers when it comes to what do, what does that process of development looks like. We are not given the opportunity to really be answered. When we submit questions, we need real answers, you know? And the city seems as if they just want to just avoid, you know, the things that we need as a community. We live in these neighborhoods. We know what we need. We know what we need. We know what will make us whole. And so, for the city to continue to come up with what they think would make a good community with development, you know, it's not favorable for the people there. So what is it that y'all can do differently to engage the community where we have the voices that's necessary to bring the improvements in type of lifestyles that we, especially the legacy homeowners and renters to a neighborhood? How do y'all include us?
First, it's a great question, but first, I want to say how much I appreciate you as a person, because we talked about family. I've seen you be not only a good mother and grandmother. I know your son, I see your son being a good father. Let's see where our track meets with our kids. So I've seen all that from a firsthand basis. Now, to your, to your greater point around the housing and development issue, one of the things we've seen that has not been done adequately in our city is engaging people in the process at the forefront rather than on the back end, right? And unfortunately, and even in the case you're dealing with, it's something that we've inherited, right? You know, we had a different mayor, a different council president, a different member of the council. But at the same time, you know, we now inherited a deal, right, that could have been done better, right? But also, there could have been greater engagement at the outset. And I say this also as a city planner, too, that there are better ways for us to look at neighborhoods, not just around what we do in terms of the residential component, but also what does it mean in terms of recreation? I know at our meeting the other night, there were discussions around that. What do we do in terms of open space and green space? How do we make areas more livable? How do we engage? And so, part of it is really just have those conversations. And the other night, I think, was useful, but that should have happened a while back, right? And so, I think that's a lesson learned, and moving forward, before you engage in these types of deals, it's important to have people at the table giving that kind of input upfront.
Councilman Bullock, we hear this a lot. You said you've inherited the issue with this deal in the Poppleton. You've inherited the problem with the school district. You've inherited community, lack of community investment all across the city when it comes to crime and other problems. When we talk to community members all over the city, with all due respect, they don't care that their elected leaders right now have inherited these problems. They elected their representatives to make the changes right now.
Okay. So one of the things I will say, and I'll go to the legal expert here, and I know that in cases we've done with the city as far as this deal, right? There have been cases that the city has entered into and lost. There have been cases that you've had a party to. And so, a lot of times, people want immediate redress. From a legal point of view, it can be quite challenging to do so. And so, if we're talking about this particular issue, again, a lot of times, there are many moving parts, and it's difficult to have that one magical answer to make that solution immediate.
Can I say something?
Please.
When we talk about the inheritance, this has been going on with the five mayors, I believe. And some of the people who were a part of that city council were a part of that 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago. Jack Young was a part of that council, the city council, when all of this, that deal went down, you know, back in 2004. So it's not so much that, you know, y'all just took this on. Y'all inherited this at this point, but it has been an issue in Poppleton, you know, since 2004.
I got to say a couple of things, and I'm trying very hard not to get frustrated with a situation that's frustrating. Poppleton neighborhood, where Ms. Sonia has raised a family, has built a home, has done everything that we ask of people to revitalize their communities, Poppleton neighborhood was destroyed by the mistakes of yesterday. There's no question. We literally ripped the fabric of West Baltimore by building the highway to nowhere because federal funds came into black neighborhoods all across America and ripped them apart. We know that. But it is also the mistakes of today because we continue not to give the rec centers their money. We continue to not pick up the trash in those neighborhoods. We continue to allow the crime to go unaddressed. We don't arrest the drug dealers. We don't prosecute the criminals. We allow these things to happen. And when the councilman says, "Well, what do we do about it? We inherited this problem."
That's not what I'm saying.
That's what we do. This is what we do. We say, "We used eminent domain, a power given to the state delegated to the city to take her home for the sake of public purposes." So you say, "You know what? That was an inappropriate exercise of eminent domain." You go to the developer and say, "We are withdrawing eminent domain. We go ahead and dare you to sue us." So then the developer sues the city, and over the next 20 years, we can fight that fight with a developer in New York. I'm happy to have that fight. And do you know who I'm fighting for? See, I got frustrated. You know who I'm fighting for? I'm fighting for Ms. Sonia because that is who we were asked to defend.
I want to pivot because you brought up a couple of, a couple of points when it comes to the criminal justice system. And obviously, that is a large part of this conversation when it comes to crime and public safety. We know that the city state's attorney, her policies to not prosecute crimes that she has deemed low level. Councilman Bullock, what are your thoughts on that policy to not arrest the drug dealers, not prosecute those, those crimes that she's calling low level? Do you think that is perhaps setting a tone of lawlessness for across the city? And is that sending the wrong message to criminals?
Well, if I think about, you know, what the state's attorney has said and what her policy has been, which is to then not go after just simple possession, but to go after possession with intent to distribute, right? So that's, that's a different thing. Now, what I will say is, what we hear from the members of the community is that they are troubled by what they see in terms of open air drug markets, hand-to-hand transactions, and things like that. So I get that it winds up to be a significant issue. But one of the things I also think is important for us to recognize, right, is that historically, we've seen folks who may have issue with substance abuse be criminalized for a public health issue as opposed to a criminal justice issue. So I think it's important to make that distinction, but at the same time, I recognize that folks' quality of life is affected by what they may see in front of their house, in their alley, and everything that goes along with that.
Two, two points with that. One, do you agree with those policies, then? And also, we've talked to other prosecutors who, who say the same thing, that people who are suffering from substance abuse problems, intervening within their life at a certain point, or perhaps arresting them, putting them in jail, and then intervening and getting them the help that they need is a way to divert them into this, the system that they need, the public health area. If that's not happening, how can you guarantee that these people who need support are getting it?
Well, in terms of support, I mean, one of the things I look at is like our stabilization centers, right? So when people are going through a crisis in terms of, in terms of addiction, right? There's a way to deal with that that's outside the criminal justice system. So I'm not sure if we're saying that arresting someone is going to be the solution for their addiction problem, because you know, a lot of people who wind up in the criminal justice system as well, continue to have that, that addiction problem.
So we all agree that victims of addiction need help. Nobody here, nobody here, not the councilman, no one thinks we should be prosecuting victims of addiction. But the question is, how do you get those victims of addiction the help that they need? There's two ways. You can go onto the streets and find them and say, "Listen, I'm going to make sure that we get you the services that you need." Or you can arrest them because they're committing some other crime, and then when they come into the criminal justice system, you say, "We're going to get you the help that you need." If either of those things were happening, I think we'd be satisfied. The problem is, neither are happening. The people on the streets, go to Edmondson Village, go to Cherry Hill, go to Park Heights, pick your neighborhood where there's an open air drug market. Nobody is helping the victims of addiction on the streets, and nobody's helping the victims of addiction on the courts. You can choose to do one or the other. What you can't choose is to do neither.
Quickly, yes or no, Councilman Bullock? Do you support the city state's attorney, Marilyn Mosby's policies?
I think there's some merits to the policies, but at the same time, the execution of them could be better.
So you do think that they could perhaps be changed, altered?
Certainly, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's go to Real. One last time, the hour is quickly moving through Real. I see you have another member of our audience. Tell us what their question is.
Mackenzie, I'm here with Pastor Rod Hudson. He owns two churches, or pastors, two churches, I should say, one in Harlem Park and one in Sandtown. He recently had a young man who was part of his church. He had baptized him and just recently had to bury him.
Yes.
So he has an interesting perspective about crime and what he sees happening in the community.
Yes, Dunhill Rochester was 18 years old, born in the 9th and 7th District. Tragically killed, police officer shot in the car. And there was no accountability, no accountability for the police officers who violated the policies. This same type of attitude is in the criminal justice system where those who are committing serious crimes are not being held accountable. There's no accountability in our police department, no accountability in our communities with police not enforcing the laws. And I would like to know from this panel, how do you feel, what do you feel could be best done to encourage our mayor, our city council persons to enforce the law? If you do a crime, you go to jail. And right now, people are not going to jail. And so, people are killing because there are no consequences, not serious ones, not ones that say that you are going to be held accountable. So please ask, answer that question for me.
Councilman Bullock?
So again, I think you look at it from multiple perspectives, right? So on one hand, you have what happens in law enforcement, and then you think about what goes on in terms of prosecution, and then also in terms of judges making decisions. But what I will say in terms of the criminal justice piece, in terms of accountability, I think one of the challenges we've dealt with has really been around police and community interaction. So things like the consent decree, the fact that, you know, the Department of Justice had to enter into agreement with the city in terms of reestablishing trust within communities, making sure that there is going to be accountability, that folks are not going to be using a badge